Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, October 29th to order. Can we have a little call please, Mrs. Schleeter?
Mr. Lysandrovich?
Here.
Mrs. Evans?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mrs. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Nielsen?
Here.
Mrs. Winklevoss?
Here.
Thank you. Has the meeting been properly posted, Dr. Ness?
Yes.
Thank you. Please rise and join us for the pleasure of weeks. I'd like to meet with the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three on the agenda is community comment. Per board policy, we allow up to 15 minutes of resident comment. Would anyone like to make a comment? Hearing none. Item four on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do your motion to approve the agenda.
Aye.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. ... Klein, I'm sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Nielsen. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, extension, motion carries. Consent agenda is item number five. Would any board member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, extension, motion carries. Item six, school board announcements. Are there any announcements?
Um, I do. I was able to attend both the inaugural concert at the Saber Center and also the choir concert at the Saber Center, which was my first time going to a choir concert, and it was wonderful. I was very impressed by both of them, and I heard some really positive comments from attendees about the facility, so I just want to share that.
Thank you.
I also did attend the inaugural. I can't pass on that. But yeah, I sit there just thinking, like, where am I? Am I really sitting here in Franklin High School? And there was some, definitely some nice calendar on the teacher related issue, so I didn't enjoy that. I also did attend the foundation fundraiser. I saw Steve there. I'm not sure what, you know, I haven't heard anything back in terms of his success, although I've seen the attendees there, and it was a nice event, so, and thank you for any what they could see.
Did you win?
No, I didn't either.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
The band program just finished their first competitive season. They had exhibition two years ago, novice last year, and competition this year. And we had their banquet last night, and she played the video of when they were at band camp in August. Were you there? Yeah, okay. And the very first time they did their performance, and then they showed the different photos throughout the season, and then they actually showed their performance at state, which was just a couple weeks ago. The transformation was amazing, and the school members were so proud. We were so proud. It was a great banquet, and it was a good program, with the new facilities, and now I think we're really going to see some of those numbers continue to grow in that program a little stronger.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, I had my school liaison meeting with Mr. Nowak, and he told me about, he had originally stated he was going to have a PTO meeting, trying to start a PTO at Franklin High School. He said Ellsworth has a PTO, and I don't know, did any board members attend that as parents? Okay. Okay, he had a small turnout for that, and we had discussed why PTO, and he wasn't sure, he wasn't sure what the turnout would be. I think he had four or five parents show up, and they really aren't interested in a traditional PTO. They want to talk more about focusing on school day and academic matters, so they won't be called a PTO. They don't want to do any fundraising, that won't be their focus, and they'll be getting back together again by mid-November. He also gave me a report on the construction of the art room. He said it should be completed soon. Is that correct, Dr. Ness?
November 17th is anticipated date.
Okay. And he took me into the space. It's going to be very nice. It's very large, and it's going to have, currently if I'm wrong, I need this, but clear garage doors on each of the rooms, which is just really interesting, so they can be opened up in a big space for gallery shows, so that'll be nice, when we can have a tour when that's finally done. He said regarding Saber Center, that for the fall play, they're getting acquainted with the stage, which they've never had to before, so with the sets and things like that, it's just interesting for them to get ready for a play for the first time there. And I didn't ask him what the name of the play was, but I think it's, well, it's very hard to find that. I know it's on November 14th and 15th, but I think it's any day now. Does anyone know for sure with the name of that? That's what I could find by looking up rehearsals. I should have asked him, so I apologize. And then one last note, Students' Senate representative will be at our next meeting on November 12th. Melissa Pelkey is her name, so we can look forward to hearing from her. Thank you. School board calendar. Item seven, special board meeting on Monday, November 3rd, here at the ECC at 6:00 PM. And then a regular board meeting Wednesday, November 12th, here at the ECC at 6:00 PM, and a regular board meeting Wednesday, December 10th, here at the ECC at 6:00 PM. And liaison reports, personnel and policy. Mr. Nielsen.
Thank you. We have a number of policies coming for the board tonight. They all relate to, they all relate to adding similar language to the different policies. So did you want to look at these in aggregate, or look at them one at a time? What did you think?
Either, if the board has questions about a particular policy, it might be better to take them one at a time.
Okay.
So perhaps that would be a way to proceed. There are three different policies, because within our policy structure, we have policies for the students, we have policies for the personnel in the district, and 3632 is actually our business policy. So there's a history of having this particular policy, which relates to tobacco use in three areas, you know, so that it can be found by the person who's looking for it from that, in that area. So that's why there are three of them. And, you know, Kathy Han is here, you know, every year, and she does quite a bit to promote within our school setting that students don't use tobacco, and she has talked to me quite a bit about this, and really has encouraged me to move forward with this policy, and talked to Mr. Nielsen about it, and have also explored that other districts are also including e-cigarettes in their tobacco policy. So essentially, each of these policies has just simply been revised to include e-cigarettes explicitly, so people are very clear about that.
Well, maybe we can just start with policy 5350. And the additional language is minor, so maybe you just, for a motion at the time. Our discussions.
5350, I know it's not something that's being changed, but in part three, treatment, the first statement that says the school board shall be emphatic that individuals cooperate with recommendations for treatment services, that's, I read that and thought that was an extremely weak statement. What's emphatic? We're going to, you better go. I mean, what, what? So I thought disciplinary steps, including suspension, or up to expulsion or termination if the individual is involved and not cooperate, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, are we going to put some teeth in it? Do they seek treatment, or we can't?
Well, you know, you can't. You can't implore a family to seek treatment for their child. I mean, it is completely their decision to do so.
Then why are we saying the school board is going to be emphatic? What's emphatic? What does that mean?
We would emphasize it. We would do our best to encourage it, to support, and help to make that happen, but we can't discipline someone if they don't have their child treated.
Okay.
But you did, the sentence has been eliminated. There was, there's something you could definitely do, you know, report this information to Milwaukee Department of Social Services, so you shut out. Is it because you legally can't do it anymore? Why, because that seemed pretty emphatic.
Yeah. It would not fall under the category of something that we are required by law to report to social services unless we found out that there was a meth lab or something. There's specific rules regarding that with regard to child abuse and calling protective services, but simply a child or student who's using tobacco, if they do not seek treatment for their child who's using tobacco, we would not call that into social services.
But we would if there were other, like, drug and alcohol?
Again, specifically, there's statutes about, is considered child abuse if there's a meth lab or drug production in a home? That is considered child abuse, and that has to be reported. We're mandatory reporters on that. That must be reported to social services.
What if the child is using, and they're not addressing the use?
That is not something we can force them into treatment. It's a family decision.
But can you report that to the Milwaukee Department of Social Services?
I think that you could, absolutely. You could. If you suspect that, you know, it's causing harm, that you should always report anything that's causing harm. Whether they will follow through on it is another question.
It's one of those areas that does not fall into the mandatory reporting guidelines.
Or it is not under drug abuse, is not?
Unless there's a production of drugs.
But if a student or employee is using drugs, and, because there's some, I think one of these talks about random drug testing, so if we kept somebody through random drug testing, say we don't do that.
We don't do random drug testing.
I know we don't. But let's say we did, and we caught someone. So what are the consequences? Because we're saying we're not going to report, we're not going to expel, we're not going to terminate, we're just going to be emphatic.
If, right, right. We would follow the steps in terms of intervening and recommending treatment if we determined that there was a student who was using drugs. Absolutely, we would do that, but we would not report that to social services if the parents then refused to get outside treatment for that student. And personnel is very different from students. As employees, they would be, there would be a different situation there, but you would not be able to discipline a student because their parent would not take them for ongoing treatment for substance abuse problem. You couldn't do that.
Okay. Not for the treatment, but the fact that they were using, there could be disciplinary.
Or if they're at school and they're under the influence, yes, you could discipline for that.
And wouldn't Oshkosh probably be involved in that?
Absolutely.
And that be municipal, and the judge would be involved in treatment actions as well?
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, do I hear a motion then for approval of board policy 5350 as recommended?
So.
Motion by Mrs. Nielsen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Larson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension. Okay. Motion carries. Six to one. Thank you. Mrs. Nielsen?
I'll take a look at the next one, I think. I'll look at, is policy 4131. This one relates to the work free, tobacco free, alcohol and tobacco free workplace, sorry. Again, adding the language of the cigarettes and everything, will we change this one?
Correct.
Do you hear a motion to approve board policy 4131 as recommended?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
I'm second.
Second by Mrs. Schleeter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. Thank you.
The last policy tied is policy number 3632. Again, the only language added here was the inclusion of e-cigarettes in the three paragraphs.
Do you hear a motion to approve board policy 3632 as recommended?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, second. Second by Mr. Allison Jovovich. Any discussion?
I would just add that, you know, we do need to change some of our signage as a result of this, because I think that people, the visitors, the public, need to know this, and they may not, you know, know that we don't allow e-cigarettes, so that would be something we need to follow through on, on our end.
Would you just add that then? Just, so it's specific again, people understand that. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of board policy 3632 as recommended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, extension, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we want to add, item nine, reports and presentations. We have people services, services report, annual health report. Miss ESA or Paulette?
We have three parts tonight. We're going to give you our annual look at health in the district, then we're going to go to the at-risk report, and then I just have one item for you on the next learning center. So we're going to start with ESA. I just wanted to mention that this year, we provided you with the whole health report, which has all that language and data in, but we also gave you just a one-page executive summary, which ESA is going to focus on, just to give you the highlights of the findings within that big document.
Hi, good evening. Nice to be here, and I'll give you some information on the document.
My question, okay, it's full length.
First item that I had focused is the concussion. We had extensive work last year for the policy, and then implementing the follow-up, and they've made accommodations for students at all levels, from elementary to the high school. We have worked very closely with the school psychologists to have a Google Doc that we follow each step of the way, what is being done from the referral point when we receive a notice of concussion until the case is resolved, and in between all the academic accommodations needed for the students. And it keep us, keeping track of how many concussions each student have had, some have more than one in labor, and so we need to monitor that very closely. Any questions about that?
I just want, is there a number that if they have more than X number of concussions, and they're precluded from participating in sports anymore?
It depends how close of one another the concussions happen, and they don't like to see the same person having more than two concussions, so they monitor that closely. We have students at the high school that may not participate in sports because of having so many close together, so it's something to monitor. Next item is the gastric test unit that we had at Rutherford last year, and that the outcome was a lot better than the year prior to that, that presently we needed to close the school for one day for all that we have. So it really bridges the next item, which is the communicable disease plan that we developed with the health department and also yours from the red department. And we looked at what we learned from the pandemic plan, and how it was so big and global, and what we really deal with every day is active surveillance of communicable disease. So the plan I had Megan posted for you to be able to look at it, and deals with specifically transmission through the skin, the dermatological, and yet, gastrointestinal, and then respiratory. So for each of that, we have mini-plans for how to, we're going to do that. The active surveillance is done on a daily basis. We collect information of what turns calling, the child illness, we collect all the symptoms, and then also if we send someone home, we document that as well with the Google Doc. And I look at it, the red department nurse looks at it, and if we have any questions, we can contact the parents and clarify symptoms, especially fever, some of the red flags that we have, that there's always something circulating in the communities, as you all are aware. Last spring, we were collecting information from all of the student immunizations, because we had a cluster of cases amongst in Milwaukee County, so we needed to find out who did not have the full immunization, and who were not fully immunized. We have to be monitored closely and possibly like exposed or supportive if we had a case. So that is, it's done on a daily basis. Other virus that were circulating, bringing back was the enterob virus D68, and that we also wanted to very closely, we had a couple suspected cases, and it's pronounced not to be the case, but we like that heightened surveillance to be implemented if we have confirmed cases and confirmed cases by a laboratory test. And those are some examples of the monitoring. I'm sure that everybody has heard about the big virus Ebola that's now coming to this country. Wisconsin has not had a case of Ebola yet, but all of the reports are being made through the state, and the World Health Organization, and Centers for Disease Control, to help to mitigate if that's to happen here in our communities. And we met with Bill Walker and Kristen Anderson last week, with Julie and Paulette and the red department nurse, to see what we expected to do. And then the following day, we received from the state some guidelines for school nurses to monitor, and yesterday, another director was given from the state of where are the patients to be evaluated and tested. So this has all been announced, and it's something that we really pay attention to. I hope that with this plan in place, we will have a more readily available references and also tools that we can communicate very well.
Questions about that?
Immunizations, again, just to report to you that we have 99.79% compliance rate, and today was the due date for all of the schools to send the reports to the health department. And from that report, the students who are not compliant with mandates, that is reported then to the district attorney, and I'd like to report that we didn't get anybody that needs to do that. Staff training is something that we do every year, especially for the health room assistants and the secretaries, and I meet with all of them in August, and I invite the red, the health department and the red department nurse, so we're all on the same page. This is how we're going to really keep consistent across the board with all of the schools, and also that communication between the school and kids before and after school programs that if a student is excluded from school, that, you know, that situation needs to be made aware to the programs also. And that is always a fun day for me, because I like to know that the, all of the assistants and the staff, the staff really take pride in what they do, and are very, very caring for the students, and eager to learn. Every year, they become full of questions, and I'm very interested. Other numbers that I have is just medications, EMS calls, and screenings. And for the screening, I am really happy every year to say that all the reports we have, we don't have a lot of referrals, but it's pretty, there was pretty high provision last year, 48 referrals, and 11 students need prescription correct there with the vision. So those are students that are not picked up by anybody else, you know, the doctor's office, or anybody else. If you can't see or if you can't hear, it's hard to learn.
So, I have a question. So I'm looking at the number of medications dispensed daily. I'm assuming OTC over the counter?
Yes.
Correct? So we have like 600, and that's just at Franklin High School?
Yes.
And how does that occur then? Do they bring their own, or?
Yes. We only dispense medication that is provided by the parents. At the high school level only, the students are able to carry Tylenol, Ethyl with themselves, and we do not require a prescription for that from a doctor. The parents signs, we form, you know, parents, you know, sign along with the students to carry with themselves. They would do it anyways when, you know, we go to this, and it was just, to me, it was a safe practice, at least we know where the parents are allowing them to carry, and would get reinforced if they are not carrying what is listed there, and all of our parents.
I just, where does the number come from, I guess?
Oh, I have a binder at the high school, and I collect all the forms, and we keep that alphabetically.
Also, as 600 parents have turned in the form to say that they're, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you do. We appreciate it, and your staff. Thank you. Thank you. Then our next report, we have Amy Dwyer and Kathy Dirks, and they're here to talk to you about the at-risk report and the youth risk behavior survey.
Hi. I will give, the first item, and we'll be at this point, we respond to copy of the annual program, which is to be another, quite so much what it's been in years past, some terms have been adopted there. They do have, it's a PowerPoint with.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay. Did you get a copy of the PowerPoint? This is the first time you're seeing it.
No, 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 no PowerPoint.
Okay, that's cool. But you have the plan. So this is just a summary of our group plan, sure, and then this is our plan. Okay, last year, we identified, last four years, 2013 and 14, we identified 10 students who are statutorily at risk. By the end of that year, four of our students graduated from Franklin High School. Four were considered to be no longer at risk, but they are current students, and two of the students continue to be at risk, from this year. Some of the strategies that we implemented in order to support them in their progress towards graduation, student services support includes counseling, crisis intervention, family meetings, weekly and daily check-in, check-out with the students, transition planning for their future careers and educational, and referrals to outside agencies for mental health and AODA family support. Four of those students had special education and individualized education plans, and three alternative education placement sites were used to support those students acquire the credit they need. Most of our students are credit deficient. Most of our students are credit deficient, so they need a plan that will allow them an opportunity to catch up on credits and make up on credits. So we Saber Academy connects rates on our project success. All right, so this year, based on last year's data, we identified eleven students to be statutorily at risk. A student is considered to be statutorily at risk if they meet two out of five criteria. I listed the five bullet points are the five different areas criteria. Ten of our students are credit deficient, which is more than one year behind in credits. Seven of those of our students are truant. Four are adjudicated delinquents. Four of them have minimal in math, reading, or language arts, or all. But this year, we do not have any parenting or pregnant at-risk students. Nine of these students attend an alternative education site and four students are programmed with an INP. Five seniors, five juniors, and one sophomore make up this list. So those are the students that, they also happened to all the high schoolers. And we are focusing on their specific goals and programming weekly, every Wednesday.
If they're considered to be deficient in credits by more than one year, how are they recognized as seniors? Because it's their fourth year. But so it's not like college where you have so many credits that's when you're freshman, sophomore, junior, senior?
Correct. We tend to consider them either freshmen, sophomore, juniors, or seniors based on their year. So you would be a senior until you graduate.
Okay.
And one of the goals of the alternative sites is so they can graduate on time or as close to on time as possible. Each year, we track data of how many students are identified at risk and how we continue to be at risk at that end of the year. This is our pattern. It appears that we've been consistent.
Questions?
Yeah.
How does, you know, they drop out or the dropout, they just disappear, right? Are they at risk of dropping out or at risk of graduating, is that?
Well, they're also dropping out. They're not graduating, they're not graduating. They're just dropping out. Should be not graduating.
So I guess if you start the year, they're sixteen, they're sixteen, thirteen at the end of the year, they could graduate, drop out, or just be a sophomore, is that?
Well, in, well, the year, the numbers that you're talking about, the sixteen and the thirteen at first, well, that's from the, the year two thousand six, seven. So it's, yeah, so that's when I first started collecting the data, so the entire group, there were sixteens too. Only three graduated or were no longer at risk. So I considered that to be a problem. And so our goal was to make sure we look at if you were at the end of the year at risk.
But I'm just wondering, if you're on the left-hand side, and you look at the end of the year, there's like you said, three options, you graduate, they're no longer at risk, or could they drop out?
Yes, they could. And I would tell you that last year, no one dropped out.
So I mean, you might think that a lower number at the end would be entirely success, but there could be some that just dropped out, just seems.
That's true. I guess because it's such a rare occurrence that I.
I don't know how rare it is, that's why I.
That's where we look at our dropout rate then, we calculate that and look at that to determine that.
They could also move because some of our kids who are at risk are, they frequently move to other districts. So we could lose them and they, it's not necessarily that they didn't graduate, but they moved to another district. So the data that Amy showed on one of the past slides, the one where it showed, that one there, that tells you what.
What actually happened.
Right.
So each year, I refer to what happened to the group before, but I can go back. There's a tie of that.
I'm saying it's a plan, there may be other things going on there that you may not see.
Definitely.
They definitely, since we had our Saber Academy and we use the other alternative programs, as Amy mentioned, I mean, our rates of non-graduating is significantly lower.
And as far as like the Saber Academy, not everybody in Saber Academy is at risk.
Not statutorily at risk.
Statutorily at risk.
Right, students are statutorily at risk.
There's obviously a reason why they're there, okay. That's interesting.
Which could be also medical reasons that they missed a lot of school because of hospitalization or severe surgeries that they missed a lot of school, so they need just time to catch up.
Sorry about that.
At the high school, as I mentioned, we weekly monitor these students. Meaning, we have identified the areas in which they may some at risk, they have a specific goal on that area, and we progress monitor weekly how much progress they've made. Today, there were two students that we identified that for the past three weeks, they've had perfect attendance, so they were truant. And they were, they continue to be quite deficient even at the beginning of the school year, but they've already made progress to really be considered not at risk, but we consider them at risk the whole year, so we'll follow them. But two students are very successful, all of them are, but you know, two are, wow, really working. And that's helps with coordinating services. And I think the information that you sent, the changes to the program are always highlighted in yellow and at the high school, the math and the LA foundation's blocked. They're still provided and they're still offered to address academic challenges for students. It just looks differently. And then at the middle school, they have a tier two and tier three math and reading intervention.
Yeah, we have that, we have the youth risk behavior, so hang where you are if you're interested in. It's coming.
We're all part of a healthier Franklin High School Youth Risk Behavior Survey results. Yay. All right, so this year, we decided, middle school and high school decided to administer the Youth Risk Behavior Survey in the fall. And what that allowed us at the high school was to include twice as many students to take the survey that we had in the past. It was also facilitated by student writing Chromebooks. And we ended up coordinating the technology part of it, so we structured some time during recess, it took fifteen to twenty minutes. Those students that wanted to participate could, those who didn't weren't. But we were able to administer the survey to more students, so that was kind of exciting for us. We also wanted to administer it in the fall, so we can use that data because we have it now to implement some programming. So I didn't really target the students that are in the building.
So how many more students?
Twice as many, so I think this came to almost a thousand, it was four maybe seven, so.
Did students have the option to take it before also?
We usually offer it to freshmen and juniors, or freshmen and juniors.
But you said students could choose to take it or not choose to take it? Has that always been the case?
You can always opt out. Okay.
So you offer it to more grades?
Yes.
That's sort of the more kind of.
Correct.
Okay.
So we're able to do that because of the Chromebook situation, which is wonderful. So the survey covers just basic safety and health areas. And. Okay. So these are the results and there was summary. So if you were to look at these columns, keep in mind, we have on the right, that's, those are the Wisconsin State percentages in the response to these questions. Our data is twenty twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. This is just high school data. So if you were to look at it that way, it's not us, we at the end, that's what we're comparing our scores to, so you can see what Wisconsin typically does. In the past, I think our scores have been very comparable, but if you look at the data this year, there is a significant decrease in smoking cigarettes, like fifty percent. There's a decrease in alcohol and other drug use. There's a decrease in bullying behaviors, fighting. And improved response to questions indicating that students are depressed or are considering suicide. Fewer students are reporting those behaviors. Fewer students are driving under the influence. While there's an increase in physical activity, there's also an increase in gaming. I don't know what's going on there, so that'll be something interesting to explore. But usually, our gaming's been lower, so it's been a lot. And then the first sexual experience has increased by the time that I was old. So the high school's response to this data, where, as I mentioned, we're using the fall data to develop programming for the school year. And Student Services were offering coping skills for healthier behaviors upon drug use for students or persons and individual assessments. The Health and PE curriculum, we use that data and the Gallup data as well, use to highlight certain areas of skill deficit or maybe an area of the mental health or physical health wise. We have a positive school plan, some are coming up next week. We have blue shirt days and ongoing harassment activities, mental health awareness activities throughout the year. Some examples include like the National Youth Initiative, which is in February, so we have a group of students, maybe others can answer that. At the high school, they are being trained or supported in school-wide positive behavioral interventions and supports. And then the district and the school safety initiative.
The middle school also took the survey in the fall this year as opposed to the spring and as in other years. And our students also use their Chromebooks, but we offered the survey during PE class, so that was the best time for our students to take that. And we had a very good turnout, almost all of our students opted in to take the survey. I think we had about fifteen to twenty kids whose parents opted them out. This is our data, and there is no state data for middle schools. So we don't have any state data to compare, but we do have our data for the last, the lines got kind of messed up there. The last line is the current data for two thousand fourteen, the ones that we just had, and the first column is two thousand twelve. And we had very similar style results as the high school. Our results have basically all kind of decreased in the areas we want them to increase, decrease, and then increased in the bottom two areas about teachers' care and give encouragement and students feeling they belong at school. So as you can see, our numbers have drastically gone down in some areas, which has been great to see.
Just a quick question. Prescription drug use is not, is it always not part of the high school survey?
There are, there are a number of questions. Sometimes there are different questions for the middle school and high school, they're not always the same. And there are some other questions that we chose not to put on here, like wearing a bike helmet that we feel were absolutely necessary, not the highlights of the survey.
I also wanted to mention that that increase on those two on the bottom about teachers' care and giving encouragement and belonging at school, you've had a pretty strong initiative at the middle school on those two areas, so you saw some really nice improvement.
Yes, last year, we were disappointed in our results because we did put a lot of effort in last year and didn't quite see the increase in those scores that we wanted to, since we did it in the spring. Throughout the year, we had really put a focus on making connections with students, teachers, making connections with students in multiple different areas, not just about grades, but you know, talking with them, building a connection. And then we didn't see it last year, so we were kind of disappointed. But then this year, it seems like anything that we've been doing, and the one thing that we did implement is called home base connections. We have a twenty-minute block at the end of the day where students are in a home base. And teachers have kind of a structure of who they check in with during that time and it's kind of on a rotating basis. I think every four weeks, a student gets called to the teacher's desk and they can talk about whatever they want. They want to talk about grades, they want to talk about what they did over the weekend. It's just that time to build that connection with the students and we're seeing positive results, so we're really happy with that. And this is the summary, it says basically what I just said, we've had a decrease in those high-risk behaviors and an increase in those, the good ones. And then what the middle school is doing is, we do implement the signs of suicide curriculum. We do it in the spring and we do it for seventh and eighth graders. It's the DPI-sponsored curriculum for suicide, and we feel like that is effective for our students. We also have blue shirt days, that's that world anti-bullying day. We have BOSS program, it's be one stand-up student, where students can be nominated by teachers or peers for being a stand-up student, that's on a monthly basis. The Health and PE curriculum has been redone, although I can't talk to the specifics of it, but I know they use the data that we have here to make any necessary changes, and I think they really value that. I talked about home base connections, that's something new that we're trying. We also have mental health support for kids who need it. And then we have monthly guidance presentations, our guidance counselors do those presentations, and they have a great response with the kids.
Just a question on the signs of suicide curriculum, is that, are parents involved with that or?
It's focused on students. You can implement it, if there's a parent section, you can send out it as a mailer, but typically, parents are not involved as part of the program.
Would that be something that might be added, or I guess, why did you decide?
The letter that the program comes with is basically informing the parents of what the program is, it's not typically involving them in the discussion. Any parent who wants to talk about suicidal concerns with their child, we definitely do that. It's something to consider if we want to do that in the spring this year, we can.
I guess, so parents aren't even aware that that is something that their child is being talked to about?
We don't send something out at the time, but in the beginning of the school year, we do let the parents know about topics that are going to be covered during the guidance presentations, and that is one of them. It's done during, the signs of suicide curriculum is presented in one of those monthly guidance presentations, and parents are made aware of what those are.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And that's it.
Yes, we do have to approve the at-risk plan. We need a vote on that. Are there any other questions on the at-risk plan at all? Do I have a motion to approve the at-risk plan? Who's presented?
I could make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Alexandrovich, is there any discussion? Are you not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, my final item for you is just a very brief one. The last action item is about for the board to approve our continuing relationship with the Connects Learning Center. And then I would just need a signature, a vote, and then a signature at the end. One thing that I wanted to share with you, you know, I've always talked about what, that Connects has such, been such a great program for us. And it certainly has been a very positive thing for a lot of students who perhaps cannot really get the full benefit through our Saber program, need to be off-site. Some of our kids just really need to be out of the district for a placement. And we have such a great relationship with them. It's been really a collaborative process in terms of curriculum development. I mean, all decisions are made by the directors from the four districts that are involved. We meet on a regular basis. And our social worker and our special ed teacher are very involved in that program, as well as the associate principal goes over there. I mean, we have a lot of interaction with the program. In addition to that, you know, I'm always telling you what a great value it is, so I thought I would just share some costs with you to show a little comparison. Right now, we have sixteen seats at Connects, and the rate has not gone up in the entire time that we've been a part of this. The rate right now is four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars per seat. And to compare that to the CISA, these are, we have three programs where we do similar types of things. Project Success at, through CISA, a seat for a half-day comparable is twelve thousand dollars per student. Fresh Start Program is twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars, that's for students who are expelled, expelled or expellable students. And we also put students at Norris. Some students have behavioral needs that really can't be met at a big high school, and that is eleven thousand. and that is $11,000. So when you look at the seats at Connects for $48.75 and the amount of impact that we can have in collaboration, it's a really good deal. So I just thought you might like to hear that.
The average Franklin student that attends Connects, it's for one year, but I know we have some that go two, is that correct?
I mean, I think it's hard to say. They're, they're similar to some of our students in SABR, maybe for different reasons. And we do have students who go to Connects and do come back or do a half-day. I mean, there are kids with all needs that, that they are served there. But typically, those that can't be successful in SABR, we look to an outside setting.
Are we approving an amount with this motion or?
You can. Really, the purpose is the, the ongoing agreement. The total amount is $78,000 for the sixteen seats.
And that's for the 2014-15?
The school year, correct.
Okay, then I'm looking for a motion to approve the Connects Learning Center consortium for the 2014-15 school year.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Klein, is there any discussion?
Are there always sixteen filled?
Not all the time. I mean, every once in a while, there might be two seats that are kind of sitting there waiting for somebody who comes through the RTI process at the high school. But, but most often, they are.
So it's a fixed contract then, more?
It does.
If we needed more than sixteen, would we be able to buy additional seats or?
Sometimes. When that, that has happened, that's a really good question. Because we're in the consortium with the four districts, we'd go to another district and say, if you have a seat available, could we have it? And we've been able to do that.
The four districts are Franklin and Cudahy, Oak Creek, and South Milwaukee?
Correct.
Does everybody have the same number of seats?
Yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing out all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you. Item nine B is the Business Services Report Budget Update and Tax Levy, and this is an action item. Mr. Millsor?
Yes. We started out with draft one in June. We had draft two for the annual meeting in August, and here we are in October with draft three. We received our information from the state that we were waiting for. We had our count of students and all of that. We redid all of the staffing and the budget to the actual staff that we have and the actual benefits and so forth that they chose, and made any other updates we needed. And that's our draft three. The information from the state was good news. We received more state aid than we had projected. And the, the other piece that stays the same from previous budgets, we were able to keep the tax levy at, at an even level. It's actually down slightly, $1,600, but we were looking to keep that stable, which we were able to do with this. We had a couple of changes. The open enrollment number of students we had came in lower than we anticipated, and we've gone back and taken a look at that. We did fill almost all of our open seats, but we had students that were in the program either move into Franklin. We had, I think, fifteen of them do that. We had fifteen leave, and we had thirty graduate. So they were kind of leaving in the middle of the program rather than us not filling seats. So we were able to fill the seats for the most part. I think we only had two. We just ran out of time in the process because you have to offer it to someone and wait for them to say yes or no. You give them an amount of time and then move on to the next person. So that was, our aid went down there, about $258,000 due to that. Let's see, a larger portion of the stadium project is actually in 14, 15 than in 13 and 14, just due to how much work they got done, at what time, and when they billed us. So we increased that. Based on that, our, we were able to continue with our long-term debt diffusing to add a little bit to that. So we're at $774,000 to help us out with our taxes in the future, as well as creating a spot that we can add into in the future. And be able to work with our tax levy really on our, on our general fund over time to try and stabilize that. So we were able to do all of those things. We also are, are looking at probably having to do a little bit of short-term borrowing this year, which I know you're like me, I thought it was out of that business, but cut it a little bit too close, had a lot of expenditures come up at the beginning of this year, as well as this shift, and probably have to do a little bit before we get our tax levy in January. But I spent some time working on that so that we would not have to go through a big borrowing process for that, that we could actually borrow from ourselves, from other funds where we have money available, and then pay the interest rate that we would be earning on that money and pay it to that fund instead of going out on the open market and paying what they might charge, which we would never get for any of our investments. And then only for the period of time that we need it. Instead of, for that, they, they like it several months. Even two months is not long enough. You're looking at five, six months minimum that we'd have to take the money to make it worth it. So I think that cost will be very low. I had put, I think, $1,000 in the budget for that, but it'll come in under that.
That's the cost of borrowing money from ourselves, is that what you're saying?
Right, right, right. And it would be the difference between paying maybe one, one point, or .17% versus one and a half, two percent. I'm not sure where the market is right now. So it's a, and then it's for that short period of time. If we needed it for a week, if we needed it for a month, we would just do that rather than borrowing it for six months. And there's also no legal fees needed for it. We'll just have a, I'll come in November with a resolution that says we're, this is what we intend to do, and that's all we need to do for it, just have it documented like that. We don't have to go through that legal review and all of that paperwork for the, I mean, that right there is thousands of dollars.
Quick question?
Yep.
And maybe this isn't the right place for it, but all the money that was raised for the SABR stadium project, is that, any of that in this coming budget, or is it all, was it taken care of in last year's budget?
It will end up being both. We had, we received some money last year, and we received a good part of all the fundraising money from individuals. And then we had four or five ongoing gifts where we would get a fourth or a fifth of it each year, something like that. And we're just about to get to the point where we would be receiving those again.
Where is that showing up in the budget?
Yeah, well, I haven't accounted for it in the, in the revenue as far as a gift to the district.
Oh, okay.
Because I'm not going to spend it on anything else that's to replenish our money.
Okay.
So it's not budgeted then?
Right, right. Those funds wouldn't be budgeted.
But the expenditure is.
Yes. Yes. And that was intended to, to come back to us as they would pay it. We were going to upfront the money, and then they were going to pay it back, and that would go back into fund balance.
And you're not picking it up because it's, it's not guaranteed? It's, I mean, the people could walk away and, and never give us their money.
They could, right, they could. And if we had, if we weren't doing the project this year, like next year, we won't have a project going on, and we would be having a higher revenue than we do expenses. And I guess I, I was just looking at having that money come back, come back to us and go right into fund balance, that we're not planning to use it for anything.
Right.
Yeah. So all we need to do is have a motion to approve the adoption format of the 14-15 budget dated 10/29/14. Then that becomes our budget for the rest of the year. And from that, then we produce our, our tax levy sheets, which go to the city before the sixth or seventh of November.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Alexandrovich and a second by Mrs. Klein to approve the 2014-15 adoption format budget dated 10/29/14. Is there any discussion?
So is this levy at the max? The limit?
Of our revenue limit?
Yes.
Yes.
And how much are we, what fund are we diffusing, or how much are we, how much borrowing are we diffusing in this budget?
$774,000.
And I see that where?
In the format, you wouldn't see that in there, not on those sheets.
And that was one of the changes that you made from the last version, is that correct?
Yeah, I think it's ninety, ninety-some thousand dollars different than the last time we had within the budget, I would say.
Do you have a question? The, I guess it'd be 250, under Support Services, the fifth line. The amount in the budget is $11,893,028, which is up from 13-14 and up from 12-13. Is that just a spike, or is that something that's going to be at that level now that we can, we're going to consider it to be more around that number? Because that includes business services, transportation, maintenance, and custodial. And I know we have more custodial.
Yeah, mainly that's where our project is centered. All of our expenses are right there for the stadium project.
Okay.
In addition, we had a couple of custodians and so forth, but that's, you know, nothing compared to how big that project is. So we would expect that number to go down next year considerably.
Okay.
And our fund, ending fund balance is about $400,000 less than the previous version?
I would expect so, because the, we're moving that project forward into this year. And we didn't have it in the budget last year. We were just waiting to see how much actually got billed, and then we were going to place it in there.
And how does the Fund 46 work as far as the 2.3? Did we, did we vote on the 2.3, or is this our vote on the 2.3?
No, you voted to move funds into Fund 46 as we could at the end of the year. And the, I wish the timeline was better, that we have to work with that, because the intent of it is to wait and see how your year comes out, and then if you have funds available, be able to put them into Fund 46. But we didn't have that information until after, we were beyond the board meeting, and there was only two days before the deadline, and we had to decide. So to get us started, and because we were in that budget, we were very close to expending all of our budget, which we usually aren't, we were able to move right into fund balance, which was one of the things we talked about, is we were going to use fund balance for that, to put that money in there. It put us right at the point where anything that we took would come out of fund balance for that. So looking at everything, that's where we came up with that. I would not expect to see anything nearly so large going in there again. And at the end of this year, I wouldn't expect to see anything going in there, but then we'll get back on track with that one after that.
I guess, so this is the vote for the 2.3? I'm not sure if you, if we actually voted on this, or is this the vote on the 2.3?
No, because of the timing, there was no chance for the board to vote on that. The board voted on putting money in there, and I had said, I'll put as much as we can in there. And at the time, I was thinking it would be a lot less. But because of the situation that we ran into at that point, we were able to put more in there. Is it a vote on that? Not really, because the funds are there.
It's already happened.
It's already happened, yeah.
Correct. So Fund 46 isn't listed in here though, is it? Where's?
So we didn't vote on 2.3?
On page three.
A quarter of the way down on page three on that one.
Well, if we had put less in there, would we be short-term borrowing?
If we would put less in there, if we would put less in there, we'd probably be doing less short-term borrowing or no short-term borrowing. But we're looking at $300 to $600 in interest and total cost on that. And for the, the opportunity of getting started with that fund at the time that we did, jumping in and getting that going, so we got our, our clock ticking on the five years to be able to use it, I think it's a good trade-off. I didn't expect to be short-term borrowing, but I still think it's a good trade-off at this point.
I think the discussion on Fund 46 was a good one when we had it, and the idea of we were very careful about, about trying to include all the different projects that we could use it on. And we had discussions on, on when it would come out and how it would come out and all that stuff. But I'd be, you know, I, I too was surprised to see the number that went in. So the part we didn't have any discussion on was the money, that how it actually gets funded. And so the board was involved heavily on what it can be used on and when it can be used, but really, at this point, doesn't have any say on how much gets put into the fund. And I think, because when we were having the discussion, my understanding was that it would be part of the budget process, and we'd discuss how Fund 46 would get funded. And so I think there should be board action required before money goes into Fund 46. And so.
I think in hindsight, not knowing how, how short that period of time was going to be that we had to decide, I would have probably tried to do it another way. And I think going into next year, we may not have anything. We don't have anything at the end of this year, but I think the next time we go through it, what we'll do is come up with an estimate or a range that we anticipate that to be, if we're going to end up in the same spot where we don't have numbers until right before their deadline and telling them how much it has to be. I think that would probably be the best way to do it, rather than, you know, or if, if the timing is such that we can make that board meeting happen at the right time, we could do it then. I think that'd be a great idea. This, this time was, was odd in that way.
Oh, I completely recognize. It was just a weird timing of it, and it was the first time through it.
Yeah.
But I think, but it is something I think needs to be recognized.
Yeah.
And I do think, even if that would be to give us a, a range of, okay, here's what I think we can do, and.
No, I absolutely agree.
So I, I would actually, then I, I would move that, that any monies that go into Fund 46 moving forward do require a board vote.
There's a motion on the floor?
It's in a, I'm amending your, I'm, I'm adding to your.
Talking two different things.
Yeah. I think it's a second motion after we vote on this one.
Oh, that's fine. We can pass the budget and then bring, bring it back, but I was just going to amend, make an amendment, but that's okay.
And I don't really think you need a motion on it, quite honestly, Tim, because I think that's just a directive of the board to say, we want to make sure that the board addresses, you know, has approval of that, just like they do with everything else.
No, I would think we do, I think, I would suggest we do have a motion on that.
So I'll withdraw any amendment, finish the vote on the, on the budget, but I, but yeah, I'd like to bring that up, and we can talk about it.
I would like to say about the short-term borrowing, that we have a fund balance policy that suggests that we don't use, we have a, a fund balance, we don't do short-term borrowing, that's why we have a fund balance.
Our policy says that we'll continue to add to our fund balance until we no longer short-term borrow, and then we added pieces in there for what we might use those funds for in the future. So it doesn't say we can't short-term borrow. I mean, if we have to, we have to. It says that if we have anything left at the end of the year, it would go into fund balance for that purpose, to offset that would be the first thing.
So how much does, how much fund balance does this budget use? Because I know it's not balanced, the expenditures are more than revenue. So how much does this budget tap into fund balance? Because our fund balance policy also says that in the, in the budget process, we will decide how much fund balance we're going to use and what it's going to be for.
Right. Well, you decided that when you accepted that project, that we would use fund balance for that. How much are we? How much are we using? Two, 2,692,907 dollars, so...
Two, six, nine.
Two, six, nine, two, nine, oh, seven.
And that is for stadium project? What is that for? And the stadium project budget was 3.?
3.3 maybe off the top of my head.
3.3? So we only charged, what's, 600,000 to last year's budget?
I don't think it was that much. We had, remember, we have funds that came in, that we had in hand to help pay for that.
Off set that.
Yeah, and then we had funds that will continue to come in to replenish our fund balance based on us upfronting the money. That was how we decided to put that together.
Okay, it just, it seems like, you know, really hard to monitor that project, but that's your responsibility. So approximately 2.7 million dollars in this budget then is, is coming out of fund balance to fund the project.
That's the way it's budgeted, right?
That's the way it's budgeted.
Mm-hmm.
And when it's all done, you can tell us what happened.
Right, right.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's a lot of money. We certainly did tap a lot into fund balance last, the last budget.
Mm-hmm, right.
And that's why, that's why we're short-term borrowing and why our fund balance goes from 17,1 to 14,4. But it's for projects we want to do. I just, I just hope that we are not going to be seeing a lot of other projects come in this year like we did last year, the pool, the state, all those things that this, in this year, we're pretty much set in terms of projects that...
Well, as projects become necessary, we'll bring them to the board in a timely manner so that you can address them. It's not that we're going to stop doing and considering projects, we can't do that. But if we have them, we will bring them to you, make you aware of them, and so we go through the process of being able to say, can we do these or not?
I, I guess I would just like them as part of a budget, not, not a mid-year introduction.
I think some of that was part of a perfect storm, too. It was a lot of money, you know, and we did have some long discussions about it, but that whole high school campus is phenomenal. Right now, looks really nice.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Here and then we have the motion by Mr. Alexandrovich and second by Mrs. Klein to approve the budget as presented. Do we need a roll call on that?
Roll call.
Yeah.
Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
I C P S. Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Did you want to...
I, I would, I would like to create a, make a motion that any monies that get deposited into for, from Fund 46 or get budgeted for Fund 46 just require a board, a board action, that's all.
And would a board action on a range be okay? In case we run into that again, like if it's within...
I think that's acceptable, yeah. I mean, because if, clearly if it was brought to the board and said, I don't know if it's going to be between 100,000 and 5 million, that probably wouldn't pass.
Right, right.
But certainly, yeah, I would, I don't want you to pin it down to the, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Like, like if you would've said, it's going to be between 3 and 500,000, and the board were to pass it, then that's what we got. And then, because that was like the number that was floated around, 300,000, and then ended up being 2.3 million, so that's all.
Okay.
So would you repeat your motion, then?
I will, I would, I, I am, I move that any monies that get budgeted to be put into fund or designated for Fund 46 require board action.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Nielsen, second by Mrs. Witkowski. All those in favor say aye.
We have little discussions because...
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion.
You made your motion, and then Jim talked about a range, and you repeated your motion without entering the range in your motion. So right now, the, the range is not part of the motion.
Well, I just require that any, then that with an acceptable range.
Right, the board still has to act on it, so...
With an acceptable, I would, I would require that any funds being earmarked for Fund 46 will just require board action, that's all. And he would bring together a range, and we would approve those funds as, as designated in that range.
Okay. I'm good.
And just what I would like to underscore, and we all know this, is that any monies that could put in there, we can't touch for five years. So that was the other, the other thing that, you know, had that number may not, maybe not been that large, you wouldn't have your hands tied as much as you did with some of the short-term borrowing. So that, that's kind of where I'm coming from, you know, because that, once that goes in there, it's...
Clarification then? Jim, we put 2.3 million in there, can't touch it for five years. This year, we put in 2 million. Can we not touch that for five years, or is that only not touchable for four years because the fund has to be in existence for five years?
I think the fund has to be in existence for five years, and all of it would be touchable after the five years.
It was just a matter of getting the clock running.
Right.
So in the future, then, you could put money into the Fund 46 for a project the next year, in like 10 years or something? That could happen?
Or year four.
Well, right, but I mean, I mean, boards down the road, administrations down the road, they'd be able to...
Right.
Put money in at one year and have more, more immediate access to it.
Yes.
Is this fund balance a source of this, your previous arrangement about using money to short-term, address a short-term borrowing issue?
No.
It's not?
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. Thank you. Anything else on the budget? Thank you very much, Mr. Noza. Okay, next we have item 9C, Superintendent's Report.
Construction update is, is going well. We are reaching that point now. We're in the high school in particular, in the main entrance. We finally reached the levels of moisture in our concrete where we can start putting carpeting and tile down. It's going to make a significant change there. As was mentioned earlier by Janet, the art areas are really coming along well. It's really changed the, the appearance of that whole area, and then once that gets done, they'll start, as I said, November 17th, we anticipate being in there, but you never know.
Is that the same area, same space?
No.
Oh, they're in a completely different?
Yeah, they are in what used to be sort of the, where all the concerts were, where the stage was.
Oh, okay.
You know, where the band room, the music area.
Oh.
On the stadium project, everything is still progressing there. We've got little odds and ends, things like fencing. If you were by there, you noticed that they seeded the softball field, so that's in place. Practice fields are being seeded as we speak. Details regarding the storage buildings, like the locks and those kinds of things are being done now. So there's odds and ends there, but overall, very well, very good progress there. In the high school, we had an issue with the rigging in our stage that we weren't happy with, and we went a few rounds with a few vendors, and it's going to be fixed now over the holiday vacation. It wasn't anything, like it didn't work or whatever, it was, it was a matter of curtains were falling over the edge of, these technical terms that Steve would tell you, but it wasn't right. And thank God we have him, because he knows what's right, now it's not, and we had a lot of this going on with people as far as who was responsible for it, and there was a meeting held with the powers that be, and we got it straightened away, so we're, we're in good shape there.
Just a quick backup to Saber Project, the, the status of the pole.
That's what I was going to ask, too.
Status of the pole hasn't changed, you know, like I've told you.
No, it hasn't moved, it's still there.
Still there.
But do we got people thinking about it?
Huh?
We got people thinking about moving it? Are they making...
I've told the board a number of times, on March 1st, it'll be moved.
And where's it going to be moved to?
It's going to be moved back about 15 yards, Jim, roughly, 60 feet, something like that.
Back where?
So not on the north end?
No.
Just where it is, but just...
Just back towards the baseball field.
Ah.
Yeah. Yeah, nothing's changed there, it's March 1st.
Oh, you have that contract in writing that March 1st it'll be moved.
Yeah, Jim and I just talked about that today, we have...
Signed contract, move March 1st.
A new light post going to be up there, obviously we need lights in that area, or not?
Yeah, the lights will go on that pole.
On the pole, that's correct.
On the cell tower pole.
People talk about it all the time.
They're going to be that far back for the field?
Well, the ones that are up there now are that far back. If you look at the new light pole that's on the north end, it's, it's way back.
Oh, I guess it never...
Yeah, it's, it's significantly different. So, so yeah, we have that in place, and that'll, that'll be, you know, March 1st is the deadline for them to get that out of there. And the rest of the project, we're still looking at January, February as far as finishing. There's still work that's got to be done, and then we'll have some sort of an open house when we get everything done, and it's all, you know, accessible. I know we've had a lot of people that have been in the Saber Center and through the other areas, but I think to give the, the impact to the people who have never been in there, they need to come in there and see it all, as opposed to coming in and seeing it partway done and those kinds of things. So it's, it's going pretty well there. As far as an update on, on my board goals that I had shared with the board earlier in the year, what, several of my big issues were making sure that, that I get into the buildings much more, and I've been doing that on a regular basis several times a week. You might have mentioned that administratively over the summer, one of our goals was to make sure that we are looking at letting our teachers teach, because we ask an awful lot of them, and we, and they're working their fingers to the bones, and every other week, we have a meeting regarding educator effectiveness that Judy's in charge of, and it's, it's just incredible how much we have to do now based on accountability and those kinds of things for, for state, for the state and so on and so forth, so that's going very well. Amy and Debbie and I will be meeting again early next week to talk about the board goal and setting up some of the issues there regarding the survey, and we, we will bring that before the board again. And then the other part of it was, that I just touched on, was this educator effectiveness. As Judy can tell you, it's, it's a never-ending, complex issue. I think our district is light-years ahead of many districts, and we did a pilot in this last year, you might remember, that really helped us, but it still is stressful for our staff, it's stressful for our administrators, but I think we've got some really sharp cookies. We got Chris Reuter at the middle school as being, you know, sort of condoned by the state as one of the gurus, because he's finding the right way to do things that they goofed up on, and so it's, it's really nice, we're getting ahead of the ballgame, but Judy's put an incredible amount of work into that, but it takes an incredible amount of work. And this is all about teacher accountability, this is about observations, evaluations, administratively as well, and it's just a big, big deal. So that, along with our, our goal of letting teachers teach, is something that I think we got to keep a handle on for the purposes of our cultures and our morale and so on and so forth, because our teachers do work very hard. And then, of course, you know, I think the, the message at the first day of school was, we want to let you teach, and then I believe, not I believe, I know I qualified, but we still have things we got to do. And of course, there are some people that say, you said you were going to let us teach, we didn't have to do all this other stuff. Well, we can't, we got to keep moving forward, and they're pretty good about it, so. Overall, I think everything is going very well, we're really seeing some great teaching and learning going on at all levels. I think we're seeing a transition of some of the things that we want to do to be better teachers. I think our kids, especially at the high school, the learning environment up there has changed dramatically, and we're progressing to make sure that our teachers are keeping that change going in terms of how kids learn and so on and so forth, so overall, it's very, we're in pretty good shape.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Okay, item 10, looking for a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, so the deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Do you hear that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski, is there any discussion? Here and then, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
I'll say yes. Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
And Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. We are now in closed session. And Agenda item 11, Board Meeting Debriefing, are there any comments about the meeting?
I, I guess I just would have liked to have seen the, the budget documents earlier. When we post an agenda, I, I'd like us to maybe reinforce the need to have those documents there on Friday, so we have the weekend to look at them. I think we, we get kind of lax in putting out the agenda, and then we just add, there's only one, like two, or two items at a time that we're adding later, but I just think it makes for better, better meetings and people can be more prepared.
On this one, the timeline's short from when we get the information to when we have to produce it, so I finished the budget yesterday about 4 o'clock or 3:30, I think, and then put the memo together and sent it out to you immediately. It might not be able to be as early as we have some other things for the October budget